Let's make the beginning. For God's sake, we're thankful and mindful of those that are in our community have suffered losses last week. And we pray for them and we pray for their healing and restoration. We're mindful of business before the county. And as commissioners today, we ask for wisdom as we make decisions for them. We pray for direction and those that keep us safe, those that wear badges and uniform. We pray for them and keep them and watch over them. So bless us now, this is the day we pray in Christ's name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Commissioner Mune, June 3rd. We will start with the minutes. We're sent via email. Any alterations, corrections? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
As she's done every man in her five years, I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Payroll number 11 for calendar year 2019 totals $228,949.39. We had 205 claims in the amount of $461,808.80.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Three, zero. Okay. All right. Scott is not here. You want to read off?
I do have Scott's numbers for the sheriff's department. Currently, there's 104 inmates. 11 of those are F6s and nine are DOC. And that's it.
Excellent. Move right to justice.
Morning.
Friday, we finished our first round of Dust Day. Round two will start next week, Monday the 10th. Last week, obviously, it was kind of a, everything got put on hold as far as hand patching and backhoe notes and normal activity to clean up down south. Just a lot to do down there. I mean, a lot of trees, a lot of brush, a lot of everything. We then Thursday got all roads open and brush pushed back enough to where I had them all run all the gravel roads to look at washouts, add burn stone, things of that sort. Because we lost a lot of gravel roads with the amount of wind and rain naturally that came through. So we were able by the weekend to have everything spruced up enough, all roads open. Our last road was open Friday. It was not our issue, waiting on some power lines that were still down. So at this point, everything's open. Everything's pushed back. We'll have to continue to go back down and clean up some brush, things of that sort. But for, to be honest, right now, I'm not real worried about it because I need to get back on backhoe notes and things of that sort. Hand patching and things that were behind because of the rain already on. So brush can set in the ditch for a while. We'll get to it. We're not going to forget about it. With that said, notes didn't change much from last meeting because of that. But we are, backhoe notes, we should be done with our four north townships this week. And as I wrote, it's kind of a repeat from last meeting, but you can see why. We have started our ditch mowing, trying to get that cut back. That stuff's growing crazy. So we're through three of our nine townships and we're all three mowers. Two of the three are running today and tomorrow I'll have the third back up and running. We had an employee have an accident at home that's going to be off for about three months. He fell off a ladder and broke his back and stuff. So we're trying to fill a void there when we're already short this time of year. So, but that's my problem, not yours. Hand patching, we're two thirds of the way complete with the south townships. There again, we're on it and hope to get to the north here in the next couple of weeks. Finally, some dry weather. So just my normal note to the paper and such of where out and about, just drivers be cautious. We're in the road, on the road, closing roads. It's just kind of part of it. Has to be worse before it gets better.
Okay.
That coverage is excellent.
Thanks.
Thank you, Josh. We move to Nate.
Good morning. Morning. We've been back here this week. Appreciate it as well as wishes it was happen last week. Thank you. Got a couple of different items for you. I've got a proposal or a design contract from USI for, it's actually a small structure, number 800, but it's actually going to be redesigned as a bridge. It's very close to the bridge in size. It'll actually be new bridge number 402. Design contract is for $38,000. And it's actually mirrored for what would be new bridge number 403, which is a Jackson 260, another small structure replacement that we need to do. Requesting approval of those two contracts. We're hoping to get design done and I'm going to submit those for community crossings funds for 2021. Application cycle.
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Three, zero for that one.
Also have a proposal for Geotech Services. It's subsurface investigation and a Geotech recommendation, essentially foundation design work for those two bridges and for a bridge 80B. It's actually a small bridge over the Mossberg Ditch on 550 West. You know it because it has a 12 ton limit. It's actually a concrete slab that's cupped. So it's, in the investigation of it, it's actually, doesn't meet AMC standards. That's why the weight limit's there and that's why it's got that cup to it. So it was a rehab done, I think in the late 60s or 70s when they put that slab on. So I'd like to replace that bridge in the same timeframe, but I don't have a design contract for this one, for that one yet. So if I could give a recommendation for that. It only needs one signature on that as well.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Three, zero.
And Blake has a copy of the 2019 Transportation Asset Management. That'll cover the roads and the pavements, all the Pacer ratings. I'm just requesting approval of that plan. We just have signatures on the cover sheet of that for all three of you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number five is at the end. Yep. I got a bunch of stuff to sign here. Another one here for signatures, HIS contracts. And there is a typo on my notes. I did those early this morning here. It's actually not Bridge 56, it's Bridge 6 in 303. There's two construction contracts. They sent out the notice of intent to award and they've sent back their contracts, signature, and I can request funds from the state once I have those signed. Boy has a copy of those there. And I'll have more for Bridge 56, 30301 at the next meeting. The notice of intent to award, but just authorizing for signatures of the contracts.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Got it.
And last item is just a notice for everybody that gravel, gravel road conversion petitions are due today. So we'll close them and I'll start tallying the totals with Lindsay this month. Hopefully, in July, I'll get your board before we stand on all those.
Okay, great.
Any questions?
Not yet. Talk to you very much. Sure you will. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nate.
Thanks, Nate.
We have one right of way for a first subdivision.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, Tim. Have you next?
Come on, Tim.
Good morning. I'm Tim Ramsey, President of Bye County Services. For you who don't know me. Got some handouts here. Some information about Bye County. And I'm here for annual funding. Same amount as always, $39,312.
Well, I guess we're done then.
It has been a difficult year. So instead of going into the financial stuff immediately like I normally do, I thought I'd just talk about why it's been a difficult year. So pretty much like every other business, we're just having a hard time trying to find staffing. We've been doing some different things and actually just hiring an employment group that we haven't used before and looking for maybe some different sources for staffing and so on that we haven't done in the past and that. But it's been a real issue for about two years now. So we continue to struggle with that. The other thing that we've struggled with this past year is that we've had quite a few of the people that we serve that passed away, just it's due to aging. It's something that we knew has been coming for quite some time and it's arrived. So we, in this past year, we've lost eight individuals. And actually, which has resulted in three open beds in our group homes, which is a major financial impact. All the costs and everything are still there. You just don't get paid the same and that. So those are the two things that have really impacted us. Last year, we projected a loss of $95,000. We actually had a loss of $45,000. So we were able to keep working with that and improve it. This year, we're looking around probably about $200,000 loss and we will continue to work on that too. But a lot of that too, I need to explain is really depreciation, that type of thing. It's not cash. We're not in any financial difficulty whatsoever. We do not have financial problems. We have substantial reserves in place, as you can see in the, in the financial information in front of you and that. So it's just our cycle. We go through this and as John Wicker has told me before he took this job and that, you just, this is what we do and we go through this. So it's one of those times. But with that said, if there are any questions, I'm just requesting our approval for our annual funding and...
It's always, you do a great job and I know the county appreciates what you do, Tim. I mean, it's a good cause. I'd make a motion, we approve of the $39,312.
All in favor?
Aye.
Three, zero. Excellent.
Thanks again.
All right. Kyle, you are next.
Thank you for having my earshot back. Again, my name's Kyle Randall, Chief of Police of the Bluff County Police Department. And I come to you on behalf of the animal shelters today. We are experiencing a lot of difficulty with the animal control truck that has the animal containment unit on it. That is the unit that they drive to go out and get aggressive animals and also pick up some roadkill and a lot of other paths. The truck right now is a 2001 Dodge. It has over 105,000 miles on it. They're operating now on a rebuilt transmission and that transmission is now needing that same repair done again, which would wipe out the repair budget this year for that. The animal containment unit itself needs some work also. Some compartments do not open that they need. So in a lot of talks with the animal shelter supervisor, it was our decision to go ahead and try to get quotes for a new vehicle. And we initially got quotes also for a new animal containment unit. So the truck, the three local companies, Chrysler, Chevy, and Ford submitted bids. And then Kelly Chevrolet out of Fort Wayne, they have a bid process similar to a state bid, but they don't do it on a state level, they do it in northeast Indiana. So they were the lowest bid actually that came in for a Chevy Silverado 2500 HD, 2019, the double cab four by four, which is very similar to what we're operating now. We have all of that, but just an extended cab. Nobody's making an extended cab anymore. It's all the quad cab or double caps. So that's what the courts were for. They use that extra space in there to store their live traps, snares, and stuff like that when they haul around to bill on calls. So that being said, if we wanted to stay local, we could, but it'd be about $1,300 more. So I would recommend Kelly Chevrolet to get the truck. The animal containment unit itself, those surprised me when I went researching those. The lowest cost I found was about $15,000 and that was out of a company in Iowa. Second lowest was around $17,000 from a company in Pennsylvania. Locally, Mavron over in Warsaw offered one for $37,000 for the containment unit. Obviously, more than the vehicle itself. So they had the best warranty, obviously, but we decided to look around to see if we could refurbish the one we have right now, which is at least 30 years old. This'll, if we get a new truck for it, it'll be the third truck, at least the third truck for this containment unit. So we, we offered the quote or offered the work to three different vendors. There was only one that replied that they would like the work and that was J&amp;A Innovations out of Uniondale. To refurbish, it's a fiberglass unit, to refurbish it and get new paint on it and redo the hinges on some of the doors, we were looking at about almost $4,700 for that. So the $28,000 plus the $4,700, we're looking, if the city and county were to split that, it'd be about $16,000 for 3250 each, for each entity. I'm asking for that amounts from each the county and the city so we can proceed with this to get them what they need. Right now, we're operating on two old trucks, a 2004 Ford Expedition, a 2011 Chevy Tahoe. Both are former K-9 vehicles for the police department. They do not provide the safety that the containment unit does for the shelter employees. The containment unit has a double door. So aggressive animals can be controlled. Just the K-9 truck, just if you open the door, there's... So this is what I'm asking for and I'm hoping the commissioners can help today. This is my first stop. Next will be the city. I wanted to stop here to see, see how we proceed, start with the commissioners.
Well, and I think Kyle, as the background for everybody is aware, when we started the process, the city handled the facility when it was created and the county just went in half in support, which basically eliminates the burden of us in terms of employees, et cetera, and allows, and we've been very fortunate that the city has done that. And Tina does a fantastic job out there for that. We've never had an issue where we've come, obviously, as Kyle's come before us to ask for financial assistance for a new vehicle. As it goes, we've always got the old K-9 units and we've had an old unit that was prior back with the original shelter. So I guess that within itself, there's, you know, a new, new ground to look at and approach. And myself, as much as I feel we have the money, I would support this because they last a long time. And I, you know, it's something new. And it serves a purpose and a need that we have to have here in the county and city. So that's just my feelings on it.
You said they had a repair budget. This is just an off the cuff question.
Yes.
Would the repair budget cover the $4,700 for the unit?
No.
We didn't have that much.
No.
Okay.
The repair budget covers the building and the vehicle. I don't, if you followed at all the building out there, seems like every year there's some big HVAC problem that goes on that eats up quite a bit of the budget, so.
We make our budgets in June for 2020 or, you know. So this is actually, you need the money ASAP.
Correct. I was, again, I was hoping to limp through until the budget cycle came around. But right now, the vehicle is inoperable. The, the people at Expert Transmission told us that the leak and the damage they're seeing is what they see right before a catastrophic failure. So we're trying to keep them from having a catastrophic failure out on the call in the city or the county. So as soon as possible. If, if we were to order through Kelly Chevrolet, it would still be an August delivery date at the earliest, so.
The others, would they be any quicker? Like the $1,300 difference, would that make any delivery difference?
That's not been my experience. And if we order it, we order it and it's two to three months out typically.
I agree. I think it's the right thing to do and maybe in the future, if there's a way to budget for some more of that down the road. So the next time we're not getting hit all at once would be nice.
It, it would be. My, my problem is, you know, the unused portion of our budget is obviously the reverse vacuum.
Right.
So that's the problem I have.
We've dealt with that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So there is no savings account for, for the animal shelter.
Right.
Well, it's, I mean, I know, serving on EMS, that we know we're going to do refurbs. And so we, we put in our budget. We know if we're going to do a changeover in five, four years, whatever, we, we plan ahead knowing that. But this, it obviously, it's needed. The old unit's old. It's just time to update.
Yes.
Mr. President, if you'd entertain a motion? I would move that we approve of the $16,432.50. It's requested by Chief.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Three, zero.
Thanks, Kyle.
Appreciate it.
We have a request for the street fair using the Courthouse Plaza from Sunday, September 15th through Sunday, September 22nd, 2019.
It's early. Is the street fair supposed to be finished?
Supposed to be finished for street fair.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Three, zero.
And then I have the policy for purchases and ordinance, 2019 OD?
Eight.
It's been, Roy updated it from the last...
A motion to approve since Kevin's...
I'll second that because I already read it.
All in favor?
Aye.
There's three.
The only other thing on the agenda was the highway garage side. Didn't know if anybody wanted to talk about that or not.
Chad's here for something, so I'm just going to let him come up. You got something to present, Chad? You have something to present?
Morning. Good morning.
Morning.
So over the last, gosh, when we start talking about Snyder Drive, it's been a while. I know we started talking about it, so probably a year plus. We went through, you guys approved along with the city for the engineering for the creation of the building of Snyder Drive. That service is done. And so now we have reached out to 2020 to look to build the street. They'll use their normal, the person, the general contractor that they have on their building project currently to do this work. He reached out, bid out the project and we received prices back for the construction of the street. It did come in, I know we had talked individually and in the executive session about the potential of what the price of the street could cost. It did unfortunately come in more than that, but it did come in quite a bit under the engineer's estimate. The total cost of the street build as an estimate is $487,371. We do know that there are several items within this in here that are undistributed, which are essentially, if needed, they'll be used. But because we don't know essentially what the soil types and what they're going to run into when they get in there, we don't know if that, some of that product's going to be used. So what essentially I'm asking for would be asking for the city tomorrow night for the remainder is to request a... is to request $150,000 towards the building of the street. The street will be built, two city specs. It will be, once it's complete, petitioned and requested to be put in the city's inventory for future maintenance. And the city then will be requesting tomorrow to pay for the remainder of the needed construction of the street. So asking today essentially for a contingent approval, if the city approves, for $150,000. And Nate did look over the information in here from the bids submitted, and everything looked good to him.
Motion to approve.
Seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Three zero.
Thanks, Jen.
Do you want to make mention of the highway garage where we want to.
I just thought it should be added to the agenda in the event we wanted to discuss it and didn't have anything specific to discuss, just to make a decision if we had something.
We just never heard that, correct?
Right, yeah. So let's just continue and discuss it down at our next meeting. Are you okay, Kevin?
I'm good with that.
Open to the audience, any questions, alteration, or anything that you want needs to be brought up to commissioners?
Bless you.
There are none?
Go ahead, Doctor.
What? A motion to adjourn?
There you go.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.